Thank you all. I would like to call to order the City Council's special meeting of February 25th, 2025 at exactly 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilman Warner.
Here.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Present.
Vice Merlingowski.
Present.
Mayor O'Connor.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, indivisible, and just as well. Thank you. Do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda? If not, may I please have a motion?
Move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Excellent.
We have a motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Vice Merlingowski. Roll call. Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Discussion of procedure. We have before us a discussion of procedure. Let's open the council for discussion on how to proceed with selecting the appointment for the vacated seat number two. I have some suggestions or recommendations I'd like to make on how we proceed, and I'm hoping that I have consensus from the council. You know, first I want to, I want to...
Your mic.
Speak closer to the mic, sir.
Sure, absolutely. First, I want to thank every single person who applied. We had six incredibly qualified applicants, each bringing a very unique perspective and unique set of talents to the role. It's no, no small feat to really step up and serve and put your name in the, in the, you know, put your name forward to potentially sit on a council and serve your community. It's a lot, and, and I want to offer my debt of gratitude to every single person. If this was a council of 11, I would say all six of them. Let's put them up here, because it really, really was just six incredibly qualified and wonderful candidates.
We would be short one, though, in terms of hands.
You're right. Excellent. That being said, though, there can only be one. So we have a very difficult decision before us. The procedure I'd like to put forward is I would like everybody, the four of us, to write down their top two choices, not even necessarily in that order. Not one, two, just two names. And I'm hoping that round one, we'll be able to count to three and find a majority of commonality, and that we'll be able to pick our next council member. If, obviously, if one of the top two choices is on everybody's sheet of paper, that's a home run. It's certainly a majority, and we can appoint that person if there's a common name, or if, you know, we narrow it down to two people, then we can open up the discussion and decide amongst those two. The last thing I want to do is alienate these wonderful candidates, you know. Somebody has, everybody has a last choice, everybody has a second to last choice, and I don't think that's necessary, and I don't think it's fair. Really, if, if we all put our top two forward, and there's some, some cohesiveness there, then we're done. Does anybody disagree with that method?
I think it's a, it's a fine approach. I'm going to say I agree with what you're saying, that the six candidates are extremely well qualified. I met with all of them, and I was, I'm very impressed, and it's a very difficult decision.
As did I.
And, yes. I think if we don't end up with, I think you're saying if there's one name out of the two that we each list, if they add up to three.
Yeah.
You're saying that one, that one getting the three.
We found a majority.
Or do we find out of the two that we each list, the top two out of that whole group?
I'd say we see how it goes. Let's all put two names down, right? If there's, we all have the same two names, then we have to find another method. Then we have to sort of put our one first choice down. But if, if there's some commonality amongst all of us, then we're off to the races.
I, I, I agree with, I think it helps us set a priority and narrow down the field.
Sure.
I'm just concerned I don't want it to come across as a secret ballot. And I think, what I'm thinking is, out of the four of us each putting down two names, the two that have the top number of responses would then become the two candidates that we would vote for one or the other.
Unless there's obvious, you know, if...
Unless one of them comes up with, with three.
Correct. And, and it doesn't necessarily have to be secret. What I just don't want is, I don't want to go first and say my two names, and it just so happens that, you know, you have the same two names, and then it looks like you chose those two people because I chose them.
No, I agree with it.
You know what I'm saying? I want it all to make our decisions, and if there's, I mean, we had incredibly strong candidates.
Yes, absolutely.
And if there's a name that we all have, or the majority of us have.
Yeah.
Then I think we're done.
I just got the attorney's opinion on that.
Well, let's get the rest of our council's opinion first. You guys have any issues with doing it that way?
No, but I would like to kind of hear what has been the precedent of other councils from our attorney, like how we, how other cities approach.
Also had appointments.
Yes.
So we have a precedent, and if I'm not mistaken, we did it very sim- similar. We had an appointment, well, besides yours, that you were not opposed, but we had an appointment where...
Me, where there was like four of us, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think we did it kind of the same way, except we maybe did our top three choices, and we tallied it up.
And then everybody presented. Uh huh. I just, okay.
Will we also be able to hear from all of the candidates tonight?
I don't think it's necessary unless we have to narrow down between two. But if, if we can get this done and...
I'd like to hear from all of them.
A lot of feelings, hurt feelings.
I think I'd like each one to present personally.
I would agree with that. Before we put down our two names.
Yes, yes, because paper looks good, but I would want to hear from them.
Yeah, I'd like to give them the opportunity.
Personally, I met with every single one of them, so.
And I spent about an hour each, each handed it.
I did too.
So kind of just like a one-minute kind of elevator speech, as, nothing long, but kind of just a...
I'm not opposed to that.
Okay, and then we'll put our three people down?
Two people.
Two, okay.
Vice Mayor?
Okay, so I did also meet with every individual. Some I spent with an hour, some were two or two and a half hours, explaining what, you know, what we're looking for as a vision for the city, how we can progress, things we can change, things we can work on. I would like to hear at least a minute's speech from everybody. It doesn't have to be five minutes or three minutes, just I'd like to have each person come up.
I'm okay with that, that's fine.
Because you might catch something that we didn't get before.
Let's go in alphabetical order.
Well, can I interrupt?
Sure.
So to answer Councilwoman Leonard's question, there's no set procedure. Cities do it in very... There's no state statute, there's no set procedure, so you have the latitude to set your own course of action. I have been asked by Councilman Warner, what happens if you have a two-two vote? So you know that's a tie, that person is not selected, but they are not precluded from being reconsidered. So if you go the first round and you have two-two on an individual, that doesn't mean that individual is automatically out.
Okay.
Fair enough.
So the idea you're going now to allow each candidate to speak for one minute, is that what I heard?
Yes.
It can be a last minute, whatever, just...
A minute, let's do...
Two minutes.
Two minutes max.
Two minutes.
Two minutes max.
And City Clerk, keep track, two minutes.
Will do.
Two minutes.
Okay, thank you.
And then we'll go to a vote of...
And then we'll, then we'll pick our top two. And then hopefully we have a consensus. If not, we'll have to keep, keep going.
And Mayor, just even though you go to a paper selection to pare down the two candidates, to show it's understood, the motion to appoint will have to be a verbal motion, seconded, and voted on by this...
I assume we're going to have this discussion, right? And then once we kind of discuss and narrow it down, I'm going to ask for a motion. Somebody will have to make that motion, somebody will have to second it, and then we'll vote.
Correct.
Okay, when we write our two, our two names down, will that be, will we give them to DJ or the clerk?
The clerk.
Okay.
To clarify, City Attorney, should they write their names on the sheets of paper?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
It's a mo- a motion to nominate, is that correct? Or is it a nomination? No, it's a point.
Motion to appoint.
A motion to appoint. You're, you're appointing an individual to fill the unexpired term of Councilmember Martinez. Understood. So there could only be one motion at a time we vote on it?
Correct.
And when we do the paper priorities, that's what I'll call it, you know, for two names, and you end up with, let's say, four names? Or no, you can't, you're going to go with the top two.
You can end up with eight names, and I'm hoping that there's a majority of one name out of the eight.
Okay, and then that would have to become a motion, but if there's a tie...
Then we'll have to continue discussion.
And if there's a tie among more than two, does the whole group come back to the, are we back to six? Or have we narrowed it down? I, I think you address that.
As we come to...
Should you...
Yeah.
All right, just trying to get something established upfront. It could be various scenarios. It's probably better to be more flexible and see how it evolves. Okay, I'm good with that.
Let's do a two-minute tops introduction from each candidate. And we'll start with Mr. Ayala. We'll go alphabetically here. And thank you again for putting your application forward.
Absolutely.
You got two minutes.
Great.
Starting now.
All right, good evening. I believe I, can you hear me? Good evening, thank you first and foremost, and remind me of being on platform at church here.
We'll start your two minutes now.
All good. Good evening. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity. I'm humbled, certainly am privileged to be here. My name is Rudwin Ayala, everybody calls me Rudy, and I'll start by just giving you the 35,000-foot-high view of who I am and why I even chose to nominate myself for this position. I'll start with my most important job. I am a husband, I am a father of three, one on the way. I am a trial attorney and have been a trial attorney for the past 15 years. I currently serve on the HOA Board of the Groves here in Westlake, moved to Westlake three years ago. I chose to nominate myself for this position because I have a heart to serve. It's what I do day in and day out, not just professionally, but personally as well. I serve and am member of this church right here, Christ Fellowship, have been here since it opened. And I made a joke at the beginning, but this is what I do any given Sunday. I'm on a platform, I serve on the worship team. We are a blessed family, we love to engage with the community, and I am humbled by the opportunity and, if so, selected. I look forward to the privilege of serving our residents here in Westlake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Really, really appreciate it. Mr. Gleason.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow residents of Westlake. My name is Eric Gleason. I am currently a commander down in Miami Gardens Police Department. I am seeking to be appointed to Westlake City Council's seat two to fulfill the remaining of the term that's been vacated. My experience is two decades, I have of public service experience, municipal government operations with that at Miami Gardens. I've been part of them since 2007. They incorporated in 2003. They're a fairly new city, just like us. I've experienced their growing pains and their successes, and bringing that to the City of Westlake's council, I think would benefit the council greatly. Some of the things that I bring, I've managed multimillion-dollar budgets, I've led government procurement efforts, I've worked on ordinance development, implemented technology and infrastructure improvements, experience that has given me a comprehensive understanding of governance. I am eager to apply that knowledge to benefit Westlake and its residents. My vision for Westlake is smart growth and infrastructure, physical responsibility, community engagement, and transparency is my big thing that I, I think that we need to bring forward as a council. Public safety and city services are always held true to my heart, because that's where I originated. Why am I the best candidate? That one right there crying on the floor. I have invested, vested interest here in Westlake, and I plan on being here for a very long time. I have a unique combination of leadership, government expertise, and a deep commitment to public service. I understand how government works, how policies are created, and how budgets are managed. So I would really, in closing, I want to thank the mayor, the council members and residents of Westlake for considering my application. I'm ready to serve, to listen, and work collaborative to make Westlake an even better place to live, work, and raise a family. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason. So cute. Mr. Isaacson.
Good evening. Let me just say, I have five, and they don't stop crying. So, and I've got a 21, 20, 16, 15, and 13, and they still do it. Good evening, ma'am, gentlemen. I could go for a long time, as you guys know, and I've met with each one of you, and I want to thank you guys for that. You know I'm extremely active at the meetings, extremely active within our HOA. I want to say that it was a pleasure to really get to know each one of you on a deeper level as well, because you know, when we come to the meetings, it's, it's, we don't have the opportunity to really get to understand you guys as council members. And that is one of the things that I would love to be able to do, is really open up the communication with the residents and open up the transparency, so the residents understand how we operate and why we do some of the things that we would do. It's my passion. When, when I told each one of you, I had no desire to live out here. I've been out here before. I used to run around the Orange Groves out here. It really came to when I moved out here, and I felt that family-oriented community, and I want that for my kids. I want my kids to know their neighbors. I want to know my neighbors. I actively involved in this. I want to see, we have a great solid foundation in this city to become an amazing city and a place that everybody wants to come. And all of us bring something different, and yes, it is going to be a tough choice, because there are some other great candidates out there. My passion is for the city. My passion is to grow the city in a responsible way. And the one thing I told all of you is, it's not what I want, and it's not what any of you want. It's what do the constituents want, what do the people in Westlake want to see within their city? Because at the end of the day, you guys and I and everybody are residents here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir.
Mr. Sarandis.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thanks to you and the members of the council who gave me the time to meet over the last couple of weeks. Ted Sarandis, proud resident here in Westlake with my wife, Mary Ellen, who's an accomplished attorney. Work in property management, own my own firm, have a unique background in sports broadcasting, is a State Guard soldier for 22 years, and a lifelong citizen advocate. And I truly believe I'm the most qualified, because, hey, I ran for elected office. The only person in the history of this wonderful place to run for elected office last November, I got 101,000 votes, including in Westlake, almost 1,300 votes. So people here know who I am, know what I'm about. I'm the only one that's put forward a very specific agenda. First and foremost, the brand that we hope will happen soon, Town Center, modeled on the beautiful Alton Town Center, Donald Ross Road. It's got to happen ASAP. Westlake City Charter, written before the city was incorporated, without input from residents, there were none at the time. Time now for the citizens to urge the city council to establish a charter review committee. Now, bring its recommendations to the council for public input in a future meeting. City's comprehensive plan, established soon after the city was established, again, no residents. It's now been nine years. Westlake growing population over 3,000 homes. It's time to establish a comprehensive panel review and a series of public hearings that will allow for public input for suggested amendments by the residents. I feel strongly we can't have a Walmart here in Westlake. Mayor and council must retain the services of an economist and market analyst, experienced in new property lawyers, to help identify the most resident-friendly use of commercial property. And lastly, the city's roads and traffic signs are under the control of the Seminole Improvement District for 30 years. It's only common sense for the city of Westlake to control the roads and traffic signs. I urge that this change happen now, and I sincerely ask for your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Sella.
Thank the council for letting me meet with you tonight. I, I honor that you looked at my application for this job. Tell you a little bit about myself. As you know, I was a detective squad commander up in New York. I also was a high school teacher and a college professor, where I taught criminal justice and forensics. I am now a citizen of Westlake, and I am retired, and I believe that this is my home, and I want that for everyone that lives here. I have no problem of doing the work. I am very in awe with my work, of doing my background checks, and I always come prepared. This is what I want for Westlake, and I will make sure it will happen if I am elected. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Winuski.
Good evening, Frank Winuski. I'm a resident in the hammocks. Been here since 2019, so I've watched it grow. For one of the first 50 homes in the city, I've watched it grow. Currently in my 27th year fire rescue, right here in North Palm Beach. I've been there 24 years. I'm a pension trustee, so I'm very involved. I'm a state-certified pension trustee. I'm involved with fiduciary responsibilities, and I said that to each one of you. I think that there's a lot of fiduciary responsibility as a council person, not just money. It's about, in my terms, membership, but it's about citizens. So we have to look at what citizens need, want, desire, as well as having the fiduciary responsibility to get that done. I have a bachelor's degree in public relations. I'm an educator. I worked at the college. I currently work at the local elementary school where my wife is the principal. And I am very involved in the community. I get involved with the, all the different societies in the city of which I work with. I'm involved with my union, and I'm just here to serve, because I've always felt that if you're not part of the solution, then you're part of the problem. So let's get there, let's get involved. And I just want to see the city grow in a financially responsible way, in a smart way. We had a little blip where we went way too fast, and we really got it, and we reeled it back in, and I think we're on the right path. But I do look at the public safety aspect of it as well. I'm on my third year in the HOA, two years being committee chair, and I'm my, and I'm currently a HOA member. So there's a little bit about me. I won't take up any more of your time. Look forward to the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winuski. I said six very, very strong candidates. Really no bad choice. All right, so two names, same piece of paper, top two, not necessarily in that order.
Those are the Italians.
And then we'll all give them over to the clerk.
Cool.
Sorry about my handwriting.
We need to put our name on this?
Yes.
Please.
Spell that.
It says three, huh? Oh, two. I keep wanting to go with three.
Top two, not in any order.
Okay, I know I'm...
I have the same name twice. Two different names.
Stretch one out. Okay, here we go.
Madam Clerk, what do we got?
Are you rushing, my clerk?
Anxious over here. Pretty sure this was my old seat when I was councilman.
He was from two or four? I thought I was in your seat. Three.
I think it was two. I think. Could be wrong.
Yeah, I think you were, because I think, yeah, you were in his spot. I think that's right, but I was pretty sure.
That one's kind of hard.
Regardless of how this goes, there's an election next year. I advise everybody to be involved in that election. If your passion is to serve, there'll be three seats, mine included, up for grabs in 2026. So if you don't get appointed today, I highly, highly advise you to run the election. Your heart is really to serve this community. Eighties?
City Attorney, would you like me to tell you what the scores are, or just tell you what the top one was? How should I?
Top two.
Top two? Well, there is a tie. So the top one was Eric Gleason and Frank Winuski tied with Rudwin Ayala.
So how many votes for Mr. Gleason?
Four.
So we all had one name that was common?
Yes.
That's it? Right? I need a motion.
I'll move appointment of Eric Gleason as City Councilmember to fill the unexpired term of Julian Martinez, City Council's seat number two. Number two.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Vice Merlingowski. Roll call. Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor. Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Resolution by title only. Resolution, City Council, City of Westlake, Florida, appointing Eric Gleason as a City Councilmember of the City of Westlake to fill the unexpired term of Julian Martinez, providing that the individual appointed to the council shall serve to the City Councilmember elected at the next regularly scheduled city election, determined by the City Council to be March 2026, is sworn into office, provided for conflict severability, provided for an effective date. If you would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution, please.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the resolution.
I'll move approval of the resolution as presented by the city attorney.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Warner, seconded by Vice Merlingowski. Roll call. Councilwoman Leonard.
Yes.
Vice Merlingowski.
Yes.
Mayor O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilman Warner.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you all for committing your applications, and as the mayor suggested or encouraged.
Let's swear him in.
Okay.
Dead air on the mic.
Still processing. This one's pretty quick.
Swear him in.
Feel good that it was all four.
Your wife can come up too, if she wants. Mr. Gleason, your wife can come up if she wants.
I'm saying, he hurt.
Okay, they're coming. I remember.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear. That I, Eric Gleason. Will support and protect. And defend the Constitution. And government of the United States. And of the state of Florida against all enemies, domestic or foreign. And that I will bear true faith, loyalty and allegiance to the same. And that I am entitled to hold office. Under the Constitution of the United States. And Constitution. And laws of the state of Florida. And that I will faithfully perform all duties of city council member of the city of Westlake, Florida. Upon which now I am about to enter, so help me God.
This is a problem again.
Okay. Momentous moment. Congratulations, Mr. Gleason. Councilman.
Doration.
Office. We have before us the resignation. Lorin Sherobduty and Edro. City manager, please provide details.
Yes, Mayor and Council. The city attorney has presented his potential resignation of from serving on the city as the city's attorney. However, after some discussions, there may be some alternatives to the firm leaving at this point in time, since we're going into a lot of meetings and future plans, and he has the history. So that's where we're at at this point in time. It's a tentative, whether you accept it or whether you ask to have him stay or has his firm stay and have him supply a different attorney at the meetings.
Do I have a choice not to accept your resignation?
No, sir, you don't. But as the city man.
Rather not accept your resignation.
And I appreciate that. Just for background, I saw, I've listened and watched the city grow. And I, I believe I'm professionally committed to it. But I also understand that you're going to have greater demands based on consideration of a charter board, comprehensive plan. And my initial thought was that I will not be in a position to give you that service. But I do have competent lawyers in our firm. We do have extensive municipal government experience. I think you're aware of that. And if you're willing to work with us or other lawyers may assist you, I would still be involved, just not as much on a regular basis to all meetings. If I could send a partner, another shareholder to a charter board meeting, a comprehensive, like your workshop on the weekend, with a comprehensive plan. And if I have a conflict, maybe they even attend the city council meeting. But I just want to have the flexibility and be honest with this.
I certainly appreciate the transparency and the honesty. To be completely candid, I mean, I was there obviously when we hired you. I was part of that, part of that meeting and part of that vetting process. We had four or five different firms that put themselves forward. And I remember clearly choosing yours and why I did. I, I never was under the impression that we got you specifically. I always thought that it was the firm that we hired. And that's part of the reason that I, I chose your firm is because of the resources that came with your firm. And we were coming from a single in-house city attorney. And I got way more for my money with your firm. You know, a war room of interns and so on and so forth, who could, you know, jam out a ordinance quickly versus it used to take months and months to get something as simple as an ordinance. So personally, I didn't know that it was you specifically. I thought it was the firm that we had hired.
And that's correct, Mayor.
Okay.
But I've sort of kept you to myself.
I hear you. In the beginning, it wasn't always you. It was between you and your partner. I would be perfectly okay if we got to keep your firm. You know, I, I know you feel some sense of ownership because of what, you know, you've accomplished with us thus far. And if at some point we decide that it's not a fit, then we will go to the street looking for another firm. But I'd be perfectly okay. In fact, I would prefer it if we don't lose you entirely. I'd love to hear from the rest of my colleagues here, but, but no, I don't want to lose your firm.
I agree with the firm. And I, you know, DJ's always been accessible when I had questions. And I had mentioned to the city manager as well, with the things that are coming within the next couple of months, it's hard to go out for RFP, get three or four firms to come back present. My one thing is if we do decide to keep the firm, that whoever's assigned for the citizen day and also the strategic plan, that it's the same attorney, not switching back and forth between different.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I agree. I'm all in support of keeping the firm. I think you're knowledgeable, you have experience, and you're very accessible to us when we need you, but you also provide us, I think, with great guidance. So I would definitely support keeping your firm.
Thank you, Councilwoman Leonard.
Yeah, DJ's been very transparent, open and upfront with myself. He's been responsive to my inquiries. However, I haven't had the benefit that you did, Mayor, in seeing what other firms are out there. And I would, I would question, what is the expiration of the current agreement with this firm? Does it come up at any time in the near future where we might, at that point, alternatively go out and review this, this firm amongst other potential firms?
I'm okay with that.
Is there?
What is, what is the renewal on the attorney's contract?
If I remember correctly, it's an open-ended contract for the attorney.
If I can address that, I'm on review every meeting. So I'm not here for any given period of time. I serve at the pleasure of this council. So if you want to go out for an RFP at any time, you can do so.
And we certainly might at some point. I think it would be incredibly disruptive to do it now amongst all these other changes that we're about to take on for another firm who's not so intimately familiar with our city.
Well, I'm, I'm okay with this firm for another year. I'm, I have a little bit of a concern with an open-ended contract.
All of our contracts are evergreen contracts.
I have problems with that, too. I, I think they should be under review. Now, we're standing with the attorney said about being under review at the end of each meeting. I think the contract should not be open-ended, evergreen, or whatever you want to call it.
I mean, we do staff, I consider the city attorney's staff. We do do staff reviews annually, and that includes the city manager.
No, I've been here for a year, and I don't remember any staff reviews. I remember being required, requested to vote on an increase in fees, but not necessarily a review. So I do think we should do a review and not just, not just look at it from a standpoint of increasing fees.
Staff reviews. Mr. City Manager, when do we do the staff reviews?
It's been, after COVID, it's been a couple of years because of all the transitions after COVID. We haven't gotten back into that. Because again, there's an out clause on all the contracts that are either a thirty-year, sixty-year, ninety-year, one hundred and twenty-day out. So at any point in time, the council can do.
That's just good practice. Do we, in order to do so, do you need just a directive from the council? Or does that have to be a motion? Can we just?
We can just, I believe we can do it by directive.
I'd like to reinstitute an annual staff review, at which point we'll review all staff, city attorney, city manager.
The only, the only staff that you have priority over is, the only staff that you have priority over is the attorney and the city manager contract. All other, all other individuals are, work at the leisure of the city manager.
But we still can do a review.
It's not your prerogative.
You cannot review the city clerk. You can meet with the city manager and talk about the city clerk, but the city clerk position's not one that serves at the pleasure of the council. Well, the city clerk is from the same company as the city manager. So you, are you reviewing?
As, as part of that contract, we supply that function. Your review would be with the city manager. That is the one that you have a direct relationship with.
But are we being told, is the council being told that we cannot review planning department, engineering department?
Those, all those departments work at the leisure of the city manager and for the city manager.
Would the city manager not want the feedback from the council?
I can get feedback from the council at any point in time that you have feedback for me. I'm glad to hear it. I get feedback from residents. I get feedback from contractors regarding the functionality of planning and zoning, building department and engineering all the time.
But all of those contracts would be to the, up to the council for RFP.
Yes, sir. You, you would approve the contracts.
Control over the contracts, just not the individual department's annual review.
Correct.
I mean, your contract is under our purview.
Correct.
So really, the buck stops with us regardless.
Right. Well, you're saying all of the contracts, but I'm hearing the city manager and city attorney say only the city manager's agreement and the city attorneys. And it's up to the city manager to deal with the planning, engineering.
It is up to his, it's in his purview to deal with the day-to-day of those departments, but the actual contracts for their services is under our purview.
Right.
In terms of, do we want to have that company or not?
Yes, sir. So wouldn't that then be subject to an annual review? The contract? If you wish, that's what the council wants, it could be, yes, sir. That's what I would agree. Because you're saying we have open-ended, and that's just seems to.
What I don't want to get into is an annual review for every single contract the city has. I don't think we need to review the pleading company. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, you want to go extreme, but I hear you, and I'm not rejecting that.
Let's reinstitute the annual reviews for the city attorney, the city manager annually.
And let's get the other ones on a cycle, not necessarily every year.
Let's also hear from our new.
Yes, absolutely.
On, on his opinion.
I don't necessarily disagree with an open-ended contract because I think that that allows us to terminate it at any point in time that we need to. And that's the part of the, the thing. If we go to a contract where we're stuck in it for a year and four months down the road, we decide that we want to go out for RFP, it's going to take us another eight months to end that contract if we don't have the clause, the proper clauses in there to end it appropriately. So I'm not, I'm not, I'm not opposed to evergreen contracts.
I tend to agree.
Okay, so I would like to propose a date specific or a month specific that we're going to do an annual review. When we do, I don't want to wait through the past all summer, but.
Yeah.
Can we coincide it with maybe the fiscal year?
Yeah. End of the fiscal year.
Yeah.
September.
September.
Well, would, could probably be within the budget cycle would be an appropriate time would be August, late August, first part of September.
So let's schedule an August workshop.
Or contract review. Contracts.
And then if we could bring forward the heavy ones, you know?
Contract review for city attorney, city manager.
City manager.
And city staff or?
Well, you've got, you've got Chen Moore as our engineer. You've got, they're also P and Z now. You've got US Nova for our building department.
We have city attorney, city clerk, city manager, planning and zoning and in engineering listed as city staff. So those would be the contracts, right?
Great. We accomplished more than an appointment there.
Very good.
So where were we?
I guess I'm withdrawing my letter of resignation.
Do we need to vote on that? Are you just withdrawing?
Excellent. I like that. Very good. Public comment. This section of the agenda allows for comments from the public to speak. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes to comment. A public comment card should be completed and returned to the city clerk. When you are called to speak, please go to the podium and retire to adjutant council. State your name and address for the record. All public comments will be noted and may receive a response if necessary. Any follow-up will be handled by staff at a later time. Madam Clerk, do we have any comment cards?
I received no comment cards, Mayor.
Mr. Isaacson, the mic is yours.
Chad Isaacson, 15398 Goldfinch Circle. First, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to at least put my name in the hat. Congratulations, sir. I want to thank Councilman Warner for bringing up the contracts. I do want to see about extending the conversation a little bit. I understand we're doing the review of the, the manager and the other things. What I'd like to see also is a list of KPIs, our key performance indicators, to know whether or not they are performing. You can do those for the other individuals as well for planning and zoning. But what I'd like to do is push the council a little farther to say, are we looking at, after nine and a half years, doing RFPs for the management company as well as the manager? I brought this up once before. I know Ken may be doing a great job, I don't know. The attorney may be doing a great job, I don't know. But at the end of the day is, are they the best fit for the city? He obviously is seeing that there's a lot of growth and a lot of things that he may not specialize in. So I, I think it's important for the council to look at doing RFPs. And we may stay with the same company and we may not. So I think I'd like to see a motion on that to not only do the annual reviews and put that in place for anybody as far as another management company, but let's look at reviewing the management company and putting out RFPs for that.
Appreciate your comment. Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comment? Ms. Torres.
Hi, Alicia Torres, 5847 Whipperwill Circle. Um, I, I really hate to do this, but I do love our city. And I think it's really important that we, we help companies and businesses that want to come here to get in seamlessly, like a nice gentle shoehorn, the long ones, you know? So as, you know, I write this blog called The Westlake Wanderer. And through this blog, I get a lot of communications, just opinions and asking for help, what have you. And one, one issue that keeps coming up is, and I'm not going to name names, but it is the building department, the city building department. And from what I am, you know, figuring out from this conversation we just had about the annual reviews is that it's Mr. Castle, city manager Ken Castle, that I should be talking to about this. But I have heard from multiple people, some of them were building brand-new on green grass. Some of them were going into Grove Market, that they've had a lot of difficulties with the building department, Westlake's building department. And when they tried to escalate it, there wasn't much help there either. I understand with Grove Market, it's an older building. There's renovations that need to be made. But for these blank parcels of land, you know, and, and look, I don't know everything about this. I just know what I've heard and where the sticking points, what people are telling me their personal sticking points were getting their businesses into our city. So I'm just trying to relay that message, is all.
I will tell you that on many occasions, when it rises to my point, I have been out with the individuals in their facilities, digging to the bottom of what the issues are. A lot of times contractors and stuff will point the finger at the city when in fact it's the contractor who did not do what they're supposed to be doing on the plans. Prime example, the sign at Habitat Burger, when it was put up. We had a set of plans that showed it being built for neon. It was built with LED. It's a different process. The guy put in LED and was trying to get his inspections. It didn't match the plans. Bottom line, I went out myself with the contractor and the building official, told the contractor, make your plans match what you built. He did. It was approved. Those kind of things get twisted out of sight. And if people do not contact me, I cannot inject. And if people do not contact me, I cannot inject into what's going on. I also had recently a meeting with the lady at the dance studio. She ultimately, I understand, fired her electrician and hired another electrician to get it done properly. Those kind of things happen. Of course, it gets blamed on the building department. Is my building department perfect? Absolutely not. Do they have issues? Yes. Does my planning department have issues from time to time? Yes. But as soon as I'm aware of the issue, I will get in the middle of it and get it straightened out and get people in. I have gotten people permits to go vertical before they were actually approved to go vertical at builder's risk to get them moving, to get them in here. So if somebody has an issue, they need to be contacting me, not the council, not you, not somebody else. They need to be getting ahold of me directly so I know what's going on because I can't be everywhere at the same time.
Sure. And to be fair, I understand there are a lot of successes and really smooth, you know, moves into our city. But the people I have talked to, they're the owners of the businesses and it's very clear it's not the general contractor or construction in this case. I understand that almost every case, there's something going on there, but what they're telling me is that it's the Westlake Building Department. And so I, I'm very clear.
They are being evaluated at this moment in time.
And I, I do refer them to you, by the way. I don't know if they reach out or not, but.
A lot of times they don't until it gets to the eleventh hour. And then I get a notice, oh, this is all wrong, et cetera, et cetera. Well, what happened? You didn't do this, he didn't do this, you didn't do this. We get them done. We push, I don't know how many of the businesses we've pushed through the door. Make them happen.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Torres. I really appreciate it. And thank you, Ken. Not, normally I wouldn't allow the back and forth like that, but this one is actually very, very important to me as well.
It's, it's critical to me and, and we are doing some major evaluations on the building department at this present time.
Please. Any other public comments? Okay. There's no further business. I will adjourn for a meeting at six fifty-two.